Yes.
You can't.
Yeah.
You're not allowed.
Try. Yes, you do. Oh, acted like I was funny. No football in Europe. Patrick wore my top off and invited to cut wood for two and a half days.
Okay.
Then I just cut wood for two and a half days again.
Yeah.
Two and a half weeks. Let's put it this way, I didn't listen to Tracy. I replied. And here I am.
And, and so they, I believe so?
Oh, yeah, she said that.
How I heard.
Here's your ibuprofen. Anybody that's gonna be here, if you could sign in on the, uh, public meeting. If you're in your seat.
I know fifteen hundred, that's your making a goal. Dave, you need me to find out?
Yeah, sure. All right, Mr. Cobby. No, we, Abby, sorry. All right, so, okay, Abby, go to the microphone. Yeah, get all the workers and what, 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 ever know.
He's her Kaiser.
He's her Kaiser.
You guys are live now. You guys are all set up. YouTube, YouTube changed the, the location, so when he's going in the studio here, he'll want to set it up. The stu- the studio location, they changed the URL for it, URL. So I fixed the URL for it. It's your idea. So, this one is, um, uh, my next page. You don't pay because I'm a good looking guy.
Is that all right? Not feel better?
Yeah, so what they did was they changed the URL for the studio. So when you went in the studio, you're going to an old page, that's where you sit in line at a live stream. So I changed the URL for it. There's nothing you can do any wrong with it, just use it as plain screen. Uh, kind of issue, I stopped everybody now. Oh, it's just, and, and.
That's easy for the, oh, you don't like to help your teachers? I think I'm the most, I think that's. That's just for members of the public. I don't think it's a test. Oh, they, they, I, I get it, that's, 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 uh, fifty eight thirty. And I got like fourteen hundred. At the rate I'm going, I'm probably gonna be beat. And then I called the stairwell and drove again, and I've been down the stairwell. But I got it. Seven, eight of a way.
Pick up more.
Yeah, it'll get you more sound.
Awesome.
It'll boost the sound up on that.
All right, we're trying to.
Have a good meeting, folks.
Thanks, sir.
See you later on.
I don't know why they do that.
I set my glasses down in here.
Do what?
I'm gonna set my glasses down.
Throw your face over there. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for meeting. Yeah.
And then it's coming, it's happening to a couple of these people about home living in a, where's another? So they're like, okay, this is what I have on my queue list. Yeah, we're listening to her. Or I can be turned. I'm gonna go back.
We made it back. Or do you have a friend like? Yeah. Got stuck on the same in the house. And then you can even more on it, so.
He's in my cabinet, I don't know if you want him, but he's getting for that or something, but I already have. I just got that, and I actually talked to him like multiple times, if I would play on their team, so I'm gonna play on somebody's.
That's the same, that's the same day as.
Who? Oh, the change.
Yes.
And then I got those two in the back end, and this is for, um, my in-service warranty program, which we already talked about that.
Yeah, we've talked about it once, yeah, with another company.
Different company or whatever she had.
No, that's me. That's, that's, that's where I operate. Really good. Yeah, I, I, I told, I talked to her after a while, after you had tried to call her. I can get a bell. First time ever. You're not just asking theoretical questions, you're talking about how to better.
You gotta go in. Yeah, YouTube has changed the whole address.
Nobody knows.
So it couldn't find it.
Yeah.
Let's hear the flag of the United States of America. Through the Republic, for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, and every justice drawn.
David, is there anybody here responding to items? I don't believe so, they're all here for the public hearing. Okay. Um, so, we've got a sign and sheet, if you want to speak on any of the items, doesn't look like we have them, is there anybody there that wanted to speak on any items that we're even signing? Okay. Moving on, move to a little minute for the regular meetings, seven fifteen twenty five. Can we just, oh, I'll make. Oh. I think that's true, uh, the, the life of these minutes. Motion, there's second.
Second.
Motion is second, all favor say aye. I'll make the same motion for August one, special meeting. That's motion for the August one special meeting minutes, there's second.
Yeah, no question.
Second, all favor. Aye, aye, say. Ray, moving on, uh, entertaining a motion to pay the claims. Um, make that motion seven sixty three to eight ninety.
Second.
Got a motion on second for the claims, all in favor? Aye. Aye. And I'll open the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh five North Trace RV Park annexation.
Yeah, this is just, uh, one of the statutory out for responsibilities for the town, uh, regarding potential annexation of the North Trace RV Park property and the jointing properties. Um, so, purpose of this is just for anyone in the public to, um, have their say on the matter, uh, council can choose to engage them or not, but this is their opportunity to say their piece, and, uh, there's no vote tonight, it's just simply informational.
And you said that there's, um, people trying to talk about.
I believe there are two here, two or three.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, uh, Nick Meyer, um, we own, uh, me and my wife own fourteen oh one North Ninth Street. Um, we've been talking back and forth with David and your lawyer about, um, you know, apparently we have livestock on the property, um, and you guys wanna give us the exemption to continue that while we own the property. Uh, our concern is if we go to sell the property, that that's not going to continue, and we feel that we're going to suffer a significant property value loss. I don't know if you know our property, but we have quite a large, uh, barn on the property, um. Yeah, yeah, I mean, you, you see it quite a ways coming into town, north side there. Um, and we feel that, you know, if, if we can't offer the ability to have livestock, you know, it's more like a four H tech farm really, is what, I mean, kind of a big, large scale livestock operation, but if we can't offer that to a new owner, we feel that that giant, you know, nice, big, beautiful barn is gonna become a, just a financial liability for a new owner, and we're gonna suffer a quite a loss, you know, as far as resale value on a property. We're trying to work out, we'd like to find a way to be able to get something to where we can continue to have it, you know, have that option for a new owner to have livestock.
What's that size of the property?
Uh, I think we're at about four acres total, now we've got two parcels there, that's kind of where the, it's kind of a little goofy setup.
Right there, it kind of takes the barn.
Yeah, like the barn is kind of a, uh, little triangle that you guys are wanting to annex, or I guess get your whole, whole area to that. I know it's a kind of a unique, unique thing, but, uh, I mean, we never would have bought the property if, if it wasn't that way, we checked before we bought it, and it was given off there. Uh, we, so if we can't pass that on to a new owner, we're gonna, uh, really cut the number of available buyers down.
Jay, is there any reason that that can't stay the way it is in your culture?
Um, other than, well, that's, that becomes, that's a zoning question. And you already have, you also have town rules against having like, only livestock in town, that's what it runs into. The way you could do this would be to allow everybody in town to have livestock, and that would be a prominent factor.
Or we allow everybody in town to property over exercise, and zone to ag town, why is that, Ray?
You can. I'm trying to think of like someone who was doing that. Oh, I don't do that.
I just said that, basically provisions in that if it was over exercise and it was zone ag, and then allow, you know, it would be permissible. Jay's saying, he's trying to think if there's any someone marked with that, maybe we won't have the indirect today, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, why can't we just make an exception for that piece of property?
Because you can have an ordinance that just makes an exception to that piece of property, uh, because that is, that's special legislation, which is not allowed. You can, and one thing about with David here, you can conceivably write an ordinance that would, other people could also qualify, if they met those requirements. But you can't write it, uh, to say, well, um, you know, Paul, Paul's house can have a, uh, you know, neon light, but nobody else can. It's, it's, it's bad law, it's probably bad policy to do stuff like that, it's also bad law to do stuff like that.
So what's the solution then to give this down? Or is it our, even our solution?
Well, it depends on what problem you want to fix. If you want to fix the problem of these folks being able to continue to do what they're doing.
Well, I mean, that's your part to be able to, for the town to grow. So how, how do you think that?
Your, if, if you want to be able to allow these people to continue what they're doing, well, they're going to be able to, they're gonna be grandfathered by the statute, their behavior is fine, what they're concerned about is passing on to the next person. And, and then you put your finger on the problem, which is, you can't, i- if you were able to tie that land permanently to do that, you are in perpetuity making that be farmland, no matter what else anybody else around there wants to do it for. And, and.
Well, unless you take what I said, and then if, if subdivisions aren't used, and they could subdivide it, and conceivably you could ask them to buy it and turn it into an apartment complex on four A.
Yeah, and, and keep livestock on it.
Yeah, if they want it.
Yeah.
Agro apartment.
Yeah. Uh, the answer is I want to do a little research to know whether you could really target it like that.
Sure.
Uh, clearly there, I don't want to speak without saying what their concerns are, but the issue of what they're allowed to do is not a really big deal, they're gonna be allowed to do this. And the reason they're allowed to do this is because of the concept of grandfathering, you don't even have to write to the statute, but what happens is you would have, if you decided to enforce the rules about no livestock for people with petigratics, they get into that crease in livestock, that would be actually an eminent domain, you would actually be costing them some value. And the reason towns and municipalities talk about grandfathering statutes, there's usually never any language that says that, it's just they don't want to enforce it because eminent domain would pick up. Somebody buys the property, they don't have that same issue, because you haven't taken anything from John's best, and somebody's buying the property. Yeah, and, uh, the, you know, annexation, having different rules for annexation, as long as it changes their behavior, has no legal consequence for the town in terms of the, the loss that they believe they're going to suffer. And I'm not minimizing that, I, we can't even disagree with that, but I know you believe that.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so, that's why you grandfather the people that are actually there when you annex with somebody else, well, they're taking it, subject to those.
Well, that's why their grandfather is that we're taking them into the town, and that is grandfathering.
They have certain behaviors that they're engaging in, in theory, um, and you don't go enforce that because you would have to, uh, exercise eminent, so you exercise them with domain, you're causing them a loss, and therefore you have to compensate them for the loss. It is the same concept that has kept, oh, I don't know, let's say the town of Webster might have an I club with a searchlight on it, uh, enforcing it because they would have to pay the law, the town would have to pay the law if they closed the thing.
I probably think a lot of it would be, that county, that, that's one that's close to my heart, maybe. We can walk away. Is that the majority of your benefits concern?
Yeah, I mean, that's just, uh, resale value, and we just feel that, I guess, I have another side, I don't know, if, like, if we would move our property from Ian and, Ian and her name to trust, I mean, is that? I don't know, does, does that can follow the trust, or that's a whole new ownership and?
The, the town, if you moved it to a, let's say, it passed, it passed this ordinance, and three years from now, you move it to a trust. The trust is a new entity, and so they, the town at that point, the trust would not be able to do the thing that the town already would be letting you do, because of the eminent domain problem.
They're gonna do it now? Are they taking it, they're not taking it? No, that's what you're considering, but yeah. I think it's worth thinking about, you know, that's just feedback based on their input, of what options might be, and I agree with that.
No, I, I think, we're very supportive.
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate it, you consider it, and, and, I feel it would, yeah, I don't, and I don't know what's future holds, but I feel it could give them a, you know, financial loss to.
David, do you understand that que-?
Yep.
Question, so we can get Steve.
Yes.
Depending on if he's doing it.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I guess the thing is, is we want to proceed with this first, and we want to figure out what that is, we don't have the answer.
Yeah.
Whether you're working on. Considering something for it.
Yeah, my name's Larry Dally, I actually farm, I'm providing there here. And, uh, I'm really curious why you're taking, trying to take half my farm and put it into the town of Syracuse. I know it has to be a continuous type of thing, but you're also taking the trailer park further to the north, which covers just about as much of it as what I do. Uh. After talking down at the courthouse, you're gonna raise my taxes by double, by being in the township.
Okay, the, if I can, the, ag, any, any land that is zoned ag, their taxes do not change so long as it remains zoned ag, you will not be paying the town taxes.
But.
Correct.
I own another piece of property that's zoned ag, and my taxes are twice as much, right beside it.
That one, um, oh, you got to turn here, that, that was pre this, so I don't know when that was annexed or if it was ag.
It's been annexed for quite a while.
Yeah, so I can't.
It's kind of got annexed, and nobody told us what to annex.
Okay.
The property line used, and, and all I own is a little tiny lot, the size of this building, and I, now I have twenty four acres, so I have to pay double tax on it.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of land in town that is, is zoned ag, and whether it's assessed ag is another question, and that's the, what's exempt, is if it's assessed ag.
That's, that's one of them, that's, uh, already inside the corporation limits, but mine is the, uh, it is directly behind it, but this talking today, he said that that line was an arbitrary line, it's somebody's fuel on a map.
No, no, the, if you're looking at GIS, it's a, it's their best assumption of where the property lines are at, I believe that's what you're referring to, but.
So I see the twenty four acres is assessed ag, and that's what we're wanting to.
I'm not sure, he's got, he's got several parcels.
Yeah, I had several parcels right in there.
Yeah.
So one that's got two accesses onto Sixth Street?
I only have one, well.
There's a line, right?
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, if you wanna come to, uh, Facebook, thank you.
Okay. Well, I mean, I thought here, it's showing two lines, um, that one's a set tag.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, so, our understanding, correct, that that, if we annex it, there's no.
Correct, the, if we annex in his property that's currently not in town, and it's assessed ag, that his property taxes will not pay. Correct. If we annex in his property that's currently not in town and it's assessed ag, then his property taxes will not change. It, yeah, it goes behind Myers and kind of curves around there. Cause their, their, their properties are contiguous with each other.
Right. So why do you have to annex mine at all?
So the, yeah, so the, the math of it is, the, the legal statute requires one eighth contiguous. So if you circle the area north of town that we want to annex, one eighth of the town has to equal that, that, that circumference. And so the math...
The court take care of that?
Do I, no, that's, it wasn't enough. That's why they had to include part of Myers property, part of your property. That's, that's the math that the, uh, the attorney came up with, is the state law. That was the best route that they could draw, to make it contiguous, yeah, so.
The state, I know, it's crazy, it's really hard to work through the law to be done, but it's complicated. Well, and what we, I think that, obviously we can't do anything about what was annexed whenever that was.
No, no, I don't, I'm, that's a strategy, I...
But going forward, I think it's important because in order for us to be able to grow prudently, it's important that people that have actual lands that's assessed ag like yourself understand that that will not affect, um, and we validate.
We validate it.
Will not affect your property yet.
No. In like the next case, when I pass on, this land goes to somebody else. It'll go up then.
See, I mean, you may not know, but the assessed value, as long as it's assessed that way, the use, which is, type of use, right?
Yeah, it's, that's a, that's a use and zoning question, that's not ownership question.
Yeah, so as long as the use in the zoning stays the same, then the assess, the way they assess it should not change, therefore it's impacted, please. I want to understand.
Yeah.
Will not change either. It's a little different than their, than their, yeah, once you say change, but based on their, their circumstance is not so much zoning related, whereas yours is.
Okay. Um, I talked about this with Dave before. In the town of Syracuse, you can't shoot guns. I shoot a couple groundhogs every year. I don't need to have the cops show up and, you know, and fill my groundhog, just gonna be taking out somebody else's one.
Are, are you standing outside the town and you shoot them?
Well, according to where you're doing the map, I'll be inside the town.
Right, because according to the law, you know, like, you can't, you're just gonna drop a rope.
Well, no, they're gonna go.
Or not the town.
No. So, but if you annex it in, am I gonna get in trouble for plugging a groundhog?
Well, that's a valid concern. I, I live on, I'm in a similar situation on the other side of town. My neighbors are in the town, I'm in the town. And I have a farm and I live beside my property and I have those kinds of issues. So, I mean, is it possible? I mean, it's possible for sure, um...
I mean, it's not, it's not always saying it's possible.
Well, I know that the, uh, the city has, uh, the police have a shooting range out there. I've had people that come to work on, so myself, who actually go and I go on the property because they're like, shooting big guns. And they have no idea where it's coming from, who's shooting, who cares? Uh, I mean, over the course of the years, we've had issues with the town of Syracuse that, I mean, you guys come to feel my fire twice.
Did it?
Uh, the, the police did one time. They shot a flare up in the air, so like, in fact, it's shooting under the flare light. It landed in my bean field that was ready to be harvested. And luckily I was out there actually harvesting, and so I went and pumped the fire out.
Well, being annexed isn't gonna change that.
Yeah, and another time, uh, the, the city, uh, the music they collect, they get dumped on, on some of my ponds. And, uh, they had a pile of leaves that had been sitting around all summer long. And so when they hauled it out, uh, they broke open the piles and they dissolved a bunch of heat from the field on fire. That was five years ago, what, something like that.
It didn't be an annexed, it didn't change that.
Really?
I did, I did, but, but, but I mean, those... What? You got the police department, probably.
Well, hey, the, the, the police thing, that was years and years and years ago. That was a long time ago. We have raised people that form forever. So, but, uh...
I think along the shore, but from a town perspective, Larry's comments and your comments is, we wanna be good neighbors, for sure. And we need growth in our town, and, you know, we're facing a lot of obstacles when it comes to different legislative changes and how that's gonna affect taxing for our town. So we appreciate landowners like you guys being willing to work with us and be open to listening to what you have to say because it adds.
Good, um, one more point.
Sure.
On these, talking about animals. Uh, we're gonna put up some chicken barns, no, way to a long ways away, but we need to have a place to haul manure. Am I allowed to leave that on the, inside the township property?
Whatever you can do in ag, you can do in ag.
I mean, it's, it's strictly ag, there won't be any livestock there.
There's no town ordinance I'm aware of that prohibits you from placing manure or whatever. You can't go put it in your neighbor's house, but here's what I do.
Well, I like that. Hey, my hearing, you can pivot and run stuff in the backyard, what is the point?
Yeah.
Uh, this is, that's hard, but, uh... Um, so, I mean, as long as, if our taxes don't get raised, I can pop a groundhog and I can do this over for you. I mean, that was most of my concern, but, you know, over the years, we, uh, the flesh from the, uh, waste treatment plant has been spread on my field. Uh, sometimes calling us a delay of a couple weeks of being able to plant, which can, in, in some instances, cost me thousands of dollars from the late not getting to be able to plant at one time. Now they, they don't do that anymore. Uh, and it wasn't their fault, it was, uh, waiting on the...
I've been here four years.
You're clear. It was waiting on some of the state regulations and all that kind of good stuff. You know, they go and they dig a hole, but the water comes up and they can't spread it and, and, uh, so, I mean, and they did spread it. We had six hours, I think, to incorporate the ground, even though they tried to spread it on frozen ground one time. I told them that wasn't gonna work very well, but... So that's just kind of something like concerning, which we try to be a good neighbor. They dug a ditch across my farm, which cost us money from the government support program. We didn't go by it, so we tried to drive in there. They made the driveway too small, my tractor, but it bit across the culvert. And again, that was just, that was a long, long time ago. Nothing, nothing recently, but, uh...
Well, it seems to me that, based on what you're saying, that the town has been a lot of things on your property, which I think is a little concerning because I would assume that we would need permission to do that, is that correct?
Well, they, they, uh, the cemetery staked out part of my field for a possible expansion. And, I mean, I showed up to plant the field and all of a sudden I got a surveyor out here putting stakes in my field.
But dude, that's the cemetery, that's not right.
Well, yeah, you know, it's, from my point of view, it's the town of Syracuse.
Right, yeah, yeah. Uh, you know, I, you and I have never met before, but I've heard your name many, many times.
Oh, sorry, sorry about that.
No, 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 the opposite, the opposite. I mean, everything I've ever heard about the town of Syracuse, um, you participating with the town has been very positive.
Yeah, and you, you have a great reputation. Uh, I'll do something to fix that, I guess.
I'm after my groundhog.
Yeah, really, well, they both...
I would say that's similar to their issue, um, I think that for people that have size of their properties, if they are in town, I think it's reasonable to have possible incentives, which obviously you'd have to research that, the same thing is for them. I don't think that that's unreasonable, um, to ask, you know, obviously if there's a way to do it, it's something that could be considered long term. We can, we can, we can see if that's even a topic. And I would, I would be in favor of that for my property, and I know that's always part of my neighbors who...
Okay, I got a, I got an ally on the board then.
I mean, you know, Wayne has a, I mean, somehow we're attached, but, uh...
Well, if you, if you actually come up with my property, something that you will see is there's a whole kind of animal, walk around everywhere. Some of them just have two legs.
Is there anything else there that you have to talk about or anything?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Nick, is there anything that you have, that you have?
No, I think, I know there are many.
I think there's a, a groundy, um, concrete, and a, and a big one. And this point, maybe my people have a house that, or people that I think have kids in the, in the barn, they don't have kids in the barn. We is like, four eight, and I keep thinking of the, when my grandkids have, so...
Sure. So... Well, we, we're very concerned for sure, and we'll be diligent on our end to try and understand what we need to do back.
And I think our spirit is we want to, if there's something we can do, uh, that we can reasonably do, I think, too, well.
There's no other comments, we'll quote the public hearing for ordinance twenty-five dash oh five, North Six, Park, Harvey Park, the next station. Okay, moving on, we're gonna skip eight, they're not gonna be here this evening, and we'll move on to nine. Twenty twenty-five dash eleven, uh, there's a request to reneal Dr. Clark Street. So, I think we're all aware that there's questions that have been made to reneal Dr. Clark Street to Rabbit Ridge Road.
Correct.
Uh, following our team of motion that changed the name from Dr. Clark Street to Rabbit Ridge Road.
I'll have a motion that we have passed, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
I'll second. My motion is second, I have papers. I'll be all in. Commonwealth, any report?
Uh, Jeremy's not here. I spoke to him this afternoon, and he didn't have anything pressing to bring to you.
Are you, park report, or if you need it?
Any questions on my report? Um, did have, yes.
Do we have funds for the, uh, preparation for the five? Do we have any more money?
Oh, no, yeah, no, we still have quite a bit of money left in the appropriation for this year. Yep. Um, in the last few, couple weeks, I've gotten two requests to, uh, allow for private block parties, uh, which is something that we don't have an ordinance to speak to. Um, it basically would be closing down a area of a street for a public or private event. Um, I spoke to Jay and he has a recommendation, um, maybe as a way to entertain this if you should choose to move forward, so.
Yeah, my suggestion is you just have, uh, you would, uh, authorize, uh, the town manager to make that decision. When I ask you to, but, uh, you know, making that request, that's because the time involved, I have the doubt someone's gonna think about that a long time before your council, uh, so they might not be able to do it. I, I think, and I visualize it, every situation is gonna have enough, uh, ultimate facts that I don't have any way to pre-write an ordinance to take care of all this thing. And of course, if you find either that, uh, if you find that becomes out of control after two or three or four eight block party, you can always decide, well, you're gonna do something different to that.
Would, Jay, would, uh, the city have any liability there?
No, no.
So, does the street department get involved and put up barricades, close the road down, does the street department get involved? How does this happen?
Well, that, I mean, those are, those are details we would definitely have to work out, um. We probably wanna set up the barricades, but I don't know if that opens us up in any way, shape, or form.
No, no, you're still okay, the town manager, you give the town manager the authority to do that, then he's gonna be able to coordinate what has to be done in terms of the physical layout of that. There may be things that, um, depending on the location, the situation, the purpose for it, that you're gonna do something simply because, okay, well, we, we can do that. For other similar requests, you might say, no, we're not gonna do it for that reason, because that's not the public purpose. It's not a good location for whatever.
Right.
So, you got, you know, it's gonna take a little bit of experimenting to go through this to see how well that works.
Yeah.
You know, you don't have anything, the town manager, it just seemed to be he was the logical center for coordinating all these different things, questions that you might have if somebody was asking to, you know, close down your block for block party or somebody else.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this because it's anything that's gonna bring people and communities together and the neighborhood together. But I am concerned about the logistics of it.
Yeah, well, we can get that figured out, so.
Well, we don't do my major. We've done this before, I don't remember recently.
Oh, yeah, not since I've been here.
Car shows, whatever else, we've shut down Main Street. We have drinking booths for events, and so somehow along all this, we've, we've managed this before. So I'm all for you making decisions of, you know, whether or not it's, it's, with, with all our department has, making sure that it, it works for them.
Yeah, there'd be, there'd be parameters, but... Yeah, and just, just, just for FYI, the two, the two that are requested are, are the church by the library. And then, uh, another one is over on the other side of town, and it's for returning soldiers, so, yeah.
Is that a motion you have in the, we wanna have that in the, uh... You're not gonna authorize the town manager, so?
I'll make that motion. That motion is second, all papers?
Thank you. Um, yeah, just real quick, if, if we can go back to looking at the, uh, I've approached it a couple times on the extra money we have sitting in general fund on, you know, what, how we might wanna purpose that to any, a certain project or a couple projects. Um, I laid out some options, um, the boardwalk, central boardwalk, main street parking lot, the village stoplights, or gateway signs. Um, did get notified today that we did get the five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Ori funds to go towards the boardwalk. Um, so that money has been, uh, awarded to us should we move forward. So, and, and if we get the ready two point O money in addition, then we would have to fund the other approximately fifty percent of the project, which might be up to eight hundred thousand dollars.
Where's the five hundred coming from?
From the, it's called Ori money, now it's called cat money. It's the money that, uh, the, um, Representative Snow brought to Cosiasko County. Part of that twenty-five million dollars. So, you know, if, if you wanna assign that, the extra general fund monies to one or more of these projects, that, you know, cause obviously we'll need to move forward with some budgetary items and some logistical items if we wanna tackle any or all of these in the coming year, next year or two.
So we've got boardwalk, you want the, your money, uh, gateway?
Boardwalk, the gateway sign, village stoplights, which would be repurposing those from the, the overhead structures to a cantilever, which is like the one uptown, um, where it removes some of the overhead clutter in the village. And then the other is redoing the main street parking lot, which is in need of, need of some love.
You need to, can I make that decision?
Yeah. That's, well, I mean, we're, we're running up against the, the end of budget season, so if you don't do it soon, then we're, you know, we'll have to look at it later on as an additional appropriation or put it in the next cycle, next year, so.
We have a boardwalk, gateway, and main street parking?
In the, in redoing the, the three stoplights in the village to match the one uptown, to get rid of some of the overhead clutter. All of these things are, uh, part of the comprehensive plan.
And the stoplights probably would be a priority.
So, yeah, N dot, N dot likes them as they are, so they, they're willing to change them out, but we have to pay for it, because... Um, the engineering studies put it at about six hundred and forty thousand dollars.
N dot likes?
Yeah.
Was it changing?
Yeah.
Oh, so the boardwalk's eight hundred, providing we get ready to, and...
Correct. Correct.
Okay, and then the main street parking lot?
Approximately one point four million, based on engineering estimates, and the gateway sign is probably a little over a hundred thousand for two of them.
How much for the gateway?
A little over a hundred thousand if we, if you do two of them.
For each of them or?
For both, for both. One's a little bit more expensive than the other because we'd be using the existing foundation on the south end. So, and just a reminder, um, the general fund has started the year at just over seven million dollars in it and projected to have closer to nine million by the end of the year, even after all expenditures, because we're, we're taking in money currently faster than we're spending it, but that can all change under Senate Bill one, that's, that's the unknown.
Well, we also have significant obligations with those water, pipeline, drink?
We do, hopefully they, but those, the ones that we're getting... We do, hopefully they, but those, the ones that we're getting ready to do are self-funding, that's alone, so.
Well, I, I'd like to review the boardwalk project, if you can clearly understand it, I think that making the village so walkable is really important, and if we can do it somehow, um, I know you said that Kimmy had looked at it, we have talked about it, so I would, I would like to look at that, and I think that, if other generals, some of these other projects, and.
Is that just each side of the road?
Correct. Okay, that's all I have. They're, so it's, it's Ben and Brown is the contractor, and they're the ones also doing our street paving, so they're gonna do them simultaneously, so they're supposed to start around the first of September, to finish it all, the paving end. Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're trying to coordinate, so they're only doing one mobilization and everything like that, so that, when they're already in town, they will get that all taken care of. Oh, I know, I've hit it myself.
Do you have any idea how long it would take to do the main street parking spot, it seems like it, it has a lot of parking now.
It, it, yeah, so you'd have to do one, you know, one level at a time, obviously, to leave, um, it would, I'm sure it would be, it would be, it would be a, it would take a couple of three months. Yeah, it would take a couple of three months, I'm sure, 'cause there'd be a lot of tearing out and rebuilding and things like that, so. Yeah, they, they, they've agreed to cost share, they just haven't given me a number yet, I, I asked them again today, and I got no response, but they did agree that they would share the cost, so.
The, um, K twenty-five, so it'd be nice for town.
Yeah, I, I mean, all these projects are worthy, and they're all part of the comprehensive plan, which we're trying to, to chew through, um, so, and I realize we can't bite them all off at one time, but we're getting, we're, you know, we're grabbing some grants to help and, and things like that, so hopefully we can see these all taken care of eventually.
So, would you be able to take that five hundred Ori and say apply it directly against the stoplights, six forty?
Um, they only granted it for the boardwalk, so that would be another ask of them, I could, I could go back to them and ask them about that project, but they only granted it for the boardwalk. Now, there's still plenty of time, they're, they're taking applications for another year and a half, so we can, we can re-approach them with that one. We're actually working on a package with Chad to get some park funding potentially through them as well, so. So far, we're the only community that I'm aware of that has submitted anything to them, so.
So, with the five hundred, we could apply it directly against the eight hundred boardwalk and?
No, no, that's, so the, the boardwalk is approximately one point six million, so that five hundred plus the ready money, which would be three hundred, is half of that, so.
Is it, uh, something to bring up here, a few months ago, uh, Make-A-God was wanting to put an electric charging station, paid for here in Syracuse, and President Trump came up with a reason to put through it.
Correct. I have not heard that from Make-A-God, so, whether they've gotten permission yet, I've not heard, so, it was one pause, the last I knew.
She's received a couple of my reporters, they're in question. Only other thing I have is our new, our fifty people just purchased, it is on the road now, so did you get it finished? So, great on that, um, and with non, uh, has received, no eighty-eight. All right, cool question, two points.
There's a new visual detail in March?
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad, um, just a couple of things, uh, September's going to be a tough rough, we do have football games, um, starting at Rock this Saturday, uh, like you know about October. We do have a softball tournament that is not scheduled for Saturday and September, so that's a three-day, three-day deal, so, coming busy day, um, there's also football game. Um, market will be closed, we'll be finishing up Labor Day weekend, the Saturday Labor Day weekend, and, um, a couple of projects that we're working on, um, softball courts at, uh, Rock, uh, I have a contractor in the last week, middle of last week, and, um, they're planning to start, uh, hopefully next week or the week after, and, uh, four to six weeks to get that complete, depending on weather and, right, that would be free potential courts up there, um, planned. And then, uh, one of the things we're working on is, um, replacing a couple of doors, community center, uh, front door, uh, mainly where the building is wood and painting that continues to stain, so we're replacing it with that, with a room door, replacing the outside exits from the restroom, um, from in to out. That way you don't have to, to do it unlocked down, with the painting part, it's inspired people to walk, and you don't have to have, uh, unlock. Question for me about the farmer's market going in, is the same part, or if it's? So, we do, we, the, the farmer's market and Memorial for Labor Day weekend, and we have the harvest festival in eighth and October, at the, the fourth or, fourth, the first weekend in October is the, is the farmer's market, uh, is the harvest festival.
Mark. Yeah, are there any questions on my report? Very straightforward, hot weather. I do have two funding requests for council tonight, both out of wastewater depreciation. Quite some time ago, you had approved the purchase of two slide gates for the, the violet dissection unit, because the lead time was so long, and I wasn't sure when I was going to get them, I did not ask for the install price. So, the slide gates are in, um, beautiful units, stainless steel, very nice units, I got two quotes for the install of those, one was forty thousand dollars, and the other was nineteen thousand one hundred and twenty-eight. So, I would ask council to approve mason engineering for nineteen thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars out of wastewater depreciation. And this would be one of the issues from the agreed order, it's one of the K L N charlies from the finished model. I make that motion.
I'll second my motion, my motion in second, all papers?
My, thank you very much, my second funding request is also from wastewater depreciation. Um, we're all well aware of Dr. Allen's new development on the north side, seventy-five percent of the sewer flow will run down Branch, the sewer down Branch Street, and into the waste treatment plant down Branch. It's the old play lines, um, David and I have discussed future going forward on projects for wastewater, and the many miles of play sewer are a priority. Uh, they're short sections, they're, they're prone to root intrusion, influent and filtration, groundwater intrusion, so, rather than dig up all of the entire town, you can do a cured-in-place liner, and they run it down, they, they coat it with an epoxy, and they heat cure it immediately, cut out for all the sewer laterals with a camera and a cutter, and it's good to go, no digging involved. We have five hundred and twenty feet down Branch Street of some of the oldest play pipe in, in town, um, it's been a problem child for better than twenty years. So, I would like to bring in Viziu Sewer, I received two quotes on this job also, Incitiform on it, uh, in excess of fifty thousand dollars, Viziu Sewer will do it for thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven and fifty cents, five hundred and twenty feet of sewer lining. There's no digging involved, we had paid a company to come in with equipment a little heavier duty than us, and to get the root ball out of that, out of that line, if we line it, that root ball's gone forever.
Have you worked for this, uh, Viziu Sewer company before?
I, I have not, I've worked with Incitiform, which is why I reached out to them first, uh, Viziu Sewer, um, I'm highly recommended, and so I reached out to them, and I can't remember the third and fourth companies, but I have a list of ten, and I reached out.
Is this different than what we used to call slip lining?
Pardon, ma'am?
We used to do this stuff called slip lining?
This is, this is slip lining, there's very little of it in, in, in town, um, nobody, um, in my crews now has ever seen it, so this will be a beautiful trial, to go in and do Branch Street, and then, um, we'll, we'll have the manholes coated, we had one replaced, um, they're not in the, the best shape, so the other two we'll have coated as well, not part of this quote.
Do they have a timeframe to do this?
It, it's really wonderful stuff, uh, I've been involved in, in pouring, or pulling, uh, probably twenty miles of it, um, at, at previous employers.
Do they have a timeframe?
Uh, it'll be done in a day, they'll, well, they'll come in, they'll clean it, and camera, just to check for any major deformities, and then, when they run that liner, it's done in a day. It's a one, for a, a, run that long, it, it's a one-day operation, they, they can do miles of this whole thing.
I, I'll make the motion that you spend thirty-eight thousand seven eighty-seven, fifty cents for Viziu Sewer LO, need to complete the five hundred and twenty foot spread to work, or, liner?
Whatever, cured-in-place liner.
I'll second. Will, will they, will they have that done, thirty days, sixty days, one day?
No, well, as soon as I get approval, they'll, they'll schedule me in, they've got, they're also doing work for, um, the company that got me in, in touch with Viziu Sewer, is doing work in town, and they will coordinate that, so, I would, I would imagine sixty days. They're working in South End right now.
Would you have motion in second, on the floor? Do you wanna retract the motion, or?
Just over sixty days. Add the sixty day, if to be completed within sixty days. I would foresee that, yes.
All right.
That's all I have, I promise. Thank you.
For how long?
I'm like, no.
Nobody here from the fire department? So, Virginia. I'm turning Mr. Jay.
Um, nothing other than what we talked about, I had the Rabbit Ridge ordinance, which was not a complicated one, I'm working on some more complicated ordinance that's on the road some March, that we didn't have first, uh, I plan to have those circulate by the end of next week, which should be, that's plenty of time for folks to set that before the council.
Got thirty days? No? Okay. Couple of comments in the floor?
The handbook amendment. I, I can, I can, so, um, we got through, quite a while ago, we went through the staff and looked at the handbook, uh, play handbook, and found some things that like see updated or amended or added or deleted, so I've given you kind of a highlight list to, uh, of what staff has recommended, so we can walk them one by one, or however you wanna do. So, um, the first one, I, I think it's adequate, um, on the vacation wording, that was the only comment I had, anyway, um, yeah. Uh, three oh four personal days, the only one of the, like, holiday or vacation or anything that doesn't give half day specifically is, uh, personal days. I think they've been operated that way, but I think the language should be in there, that they can take it in a half-day increment if they choose, just like they can vacation days or take days. Um, under three twenty-four licensing and certification, it's currently states their treasurer or town manager responsible for approving any, any training, um, I think that needs to be changed to, uh, department head, just give the department head that authorization, authority, to send their people to training, um, if not, then if you wanna leave it as is, we need to add public works director.
Are you suggesting department head?
I am suggesting department head is, is adequate, that they should have that authority, um, which will include Chad and everyone else. Did you, so, so, I think that, I think it's, they're, they're certainly in position to make that decision, so. Uh, that may be something that we need to add in there, is, you know, if, if training or certification costs a certain amount, now, they, they all have spending limits already, the department has to do, so, I guess if it exceeds their spending limit, then they'd have to come to immediate approval, so.
Do we even have to do a motion for this, or a second?
Uh, you can, if this is presented by, uh, the employees, you can use, well, yeah, you probably have to, you have to have a motion to authorize, uh, these changes, because you presumably created a policy book in the first place formally by some legal action, and so.
We just, I mean, if we, if we basically say these changes are correct, or whatever we say, and a, a new policy book comes out, can't we just approve that?
Yeah, you can authorize these changes, or you can say, hey, put these in a new policy book, and we'll go for the whole thing, uh, either way, you're making one motion to approve.
Um, so five oh seven overtime policies, the, the only thing, and there's some language that needs changed, it currently says town marshal, and it needs to be changed to chief of police, and then remove the word captain, 'cause we don't have a captain on the department anymore. That's just some language clarification. Uh, by the way, use of equipment, um, it, it currently states the police officers have to live within fifteen miles, but obviously we adopted a new policy for their take-home, so that just needs to be amended to reflect the current policy. Um, and we, we kinda ironed this out a year or so ago about, um, other people than, other than employees riding in-town vehicles, that was also painted about a year ago, um, so, just need to add that language to the, um. No, the insurance cleared it and said that they were okay with it, with having passengers in-town vehicles.
Didn't that sign the form?
Um, yeah, I believe there was consent for them, they were required to be signed. Yeah, yeah, that was required to be signed if they were gonna ride in a town vehicle. It probably should.
Or add the language.
And then, um, again, there's language about town marshal, and that just needs to be changed, it's police chief in that section as well.
The change in red was executing the consent form prior to?
Correct, correct, yeah. Well, I mean, the police, you know, they, they, they're different, because they'll, they'll be transporting juveniles, you know, more, obviously more often than anyone else would, but, um.
Well, if the staff's signed a consent, you can't get somebody in or AP can't waive that, so they're not gonna be able to sign a letter.
So, their, their parent would have to.
Yeah, well, we've done the board, so we got the parent's sign, and then give consent. We got the parent's sign and then given consent. I mean, does this policy need to say that? I mean, for everybody, you know, the photos from high school kids and taking for a ride.
No, I mean, that seems reasonable to me. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Do we need that? I mean, legally you have to be eighteen to consent anyways. Is that the fine?
If, if, if you are saying they have to waive, somebody who's under eighteen can't waive, so in a way they can be waived as if they get an adult. Uh, I don't think it would be legally required.
Yeah, we, we can add that. Uh, five oh nine on call standby time, um. So the question is currently the, 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 that item says provision is applicable to police department employees only. Um, we did have a lot of public work employees that are on call on the weekends, um, and they currently don't get paid, Greg. So, um, just the thought of is it, should they be paid standby time? Um, since they're on call and they really have to stay around town.
I don't know what the law is now, but when I get to where I get on call, I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Seems like it should be at least minimum like.
Well, they get, they get, they get time and a half, right, when they get called in on a weekend? Yeah, so if they get called in for an emergency or whatever, they get paid, but even, even if they don't get called in, they're, they're kinda restricted to staying around town. And so I think they should be compensated for that.
It doesn't hurt to check, but of course the government wrote the labor laws and they end up doing a lot of loopholes for government employees. But on the private police, they can't take a day off.
Are you saying that's a case here or no?
I'm saying that, that, uh, it might be a case, but you always check. Yeah, it's okay to double check. It would not surprise me if the rules were different and they were for, you know, you were being.
Okay. I can check on that. Uh, five twelve business travel expenses, um, currently the, it's kind of vague. It just says, uh, costing meals can be no more lavish than what be eaten by employees on expense. Well, that can, everybody's a little different on that. Some spend a whole lot more and less than others. So, um, I don't know if we wanna try to dial that in a little bit, um, to say no more than, or, um, I think Virginia is, somebody, somebody suggested maybe giving them a per diem before they travel. Say here's some cash, but I don't even know if that's allowable.
No, I think when we first talked about it, uh, it was like sixty dollars.
Yeah.
Because usually most conferences, they provide the breakfast and the lunch. Sometimes it's provided dinner, so it just depends.
Yeah, and sometimes where they have a dinner, it's really expensive.
Yeah. But if they, if there's not a dinner, lunch or breakfast provided, we.
If we provide a per diem, do they stop paying the chief back?
No.
No.
No. No, but, because if you're giving them the same amount one way or the other. You're just saying, okay, this is in lieu of you having to bring back receipts and getting it down to fifty-seven dollars ninety-two cents. This is, okay, here's sixty, do whatever you need.
So does that mean do we get it in cash?
No, you're right, yeah.
Oh, so there's a.
They're doing expense report. If it's on six days, it'd be six days times two hundred bucks, it'd be six hundred dollars on top of whatever the rest of the expense would be.
Yeah, if you're not compensating them based upon the amount that they are actually spending, you don't have to have receipts. You're compensating them based upon the time that they are away and have to supply their own food. So that's, that's the advantage of per diem.
Which is Larry's point. If you've got a four day conference and you know day five you're going to Ruth Chris, maybe you eat McDonald's day one and two, save up for per diem. His amount and apply to Ruth Chris on day three and, you know, how.
So we went on, I think, you know, a hundred dollars.
Oh, we could have. So they would for a number of their one six days, but it's a hundred dollars food.
Yeah. And I, and I added potential language in there. It says any cost beyond whatever number is agreed upon would be the responsibility of the employee. So if they, they're, if they run out of money, then it's on them.
They're allowed to be more than that.
Yeah. Right. They just have to pay for it, correct. Yeah. You just have to pay for it if you exceed that amount. It becomes your responsibility, so.
But I think as far as what you're saying, I think a number should be elected, but I think it ranges at fifty dollars.
And what if it's like a one day conference? What that means food is?
It all depends on how you write your policy. You're right, but typically the per diem, if they're gone that day, they're getting that per diem.
I bet makes close to, close to the number there.
I was just wondering if there's a lunch and breakfast and lunch included, are we gonna give them money for that if you, if included should be paid for that cost for the registration? Enough terms in detail.
But that's true because most of the times, most conferences, they usually provide you breakfast and lunch. Sometimes dinner, it just depends, but most of the time it's not dinner, but dinner's also expensive.
You know, I'm, I'm aware of a person who received a per diem for different things for years and years and years. The dinner reported on her tax return. The IRS came back later and they had to pay that, and only they have interest because they never could report that per diem the first morning. And they only have these fees to show that they spent the money. You know, I, I.
The standard receipt thing that was in last night isn't expensive, is what you're saying?
I'm thinking so. But they know that they put a document. I mean, I, I really think before we do that, we need to have a tax account.
So, yeah, so why can't we continue doing what we're doing right now, uh, and having them use the credit card for the meal? And just say you're wanting it to be fifty dollars.
Yeah, it's not fifty.
Yeah, not fifty, fifty dollars a day. If you go over, then you don't have to pay.
But then you do need receipts to justify the charges on the credit card.
What do we do? What do we do?
But, uh, I, I just hope somebody's got trouble paying that they can do this.
So if we do it for per diem.
Do what we're saying and maybe.
So if we do it for per diem, they have to put on a tax, is that the concept?
Potentially. I mean, yeah, I mean, continuing to use the credit cards is fine, as, you know, but be, as long as, you know, if they go, if they, if you put a limit on it per day and then if they exceed that, they just have to pay the company.
And usually you're really good about giving them receipts.
A lot of times, and I'm sure public works same way, when they send here three to train, to a train, so then you get one receipt for all three, so how do you know?
Right, then, then it'll be sixty, I mean, I think you've been to that before.
Yeah, you'd have to say.
Yeah.
You know, but I mean, it's just a limit on how much. Maybe if you just wanted to keep doing that, but if you're just too much to pay for first one, it's not.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that if you guys just wanna select a nominee. Anybody, you guys have any comment?
What is it then, Virginia?
Like, I just went to a conference and I only spent like under a hundred dollars, so, because everything was provided. And usually it is provided.
Not all conferences.
Not all conferences.
For training, training, they have nothing provided, right?
Yeah, it can be, it can vary.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, it depends on.
Depends on who's hosting.
Right.
Which one?
So if that becomes a problem for any reason, I think you should have data to provide what should be.
Um, then in that same travel thing, if there's a line that says vehicles only used or rented by the town or there it may not be used for personal use without prior approval. Who approves? It doesn't say. It just says approval. Um, and then section five oh eight, which is another section, states employees may not use town on vehicle for equipment, machines, tools, or vehicles for personal, private use. So they, they're kinda contradicting each other.
Well, why wouldn't we give people town vehicles for personal use?
Right. So it just happens to be in there, so it just needs a language to be straightened out and not conflicting with one another. Just, just, just say, yeah. Other than the police department, like some, some language along that line, so.
Yeah, and Jim, that's in your SOPs, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, so the exception would be the police department SOPs.
Right, right.
Right?
Yep. Okay. Uh, okay. Any other questions on that one? Five sixteen, computer and email usage. It states to ensure compliance with this policy, computer and email usage may be monitored. I'm not sure who's monitoring. I know I'm not, so I don't know. You wanna delete that one or add someone to, you know, to have the authority to look at people for, you know, uh, to look at people's, uh, work computers or not, so.
At, at this point, it can be monitored because this is a policy request for the town council. So the council can decide to monitor it or designate somebody, and I could anticipate different situations, which the council would say, you know, we gotta check this person's email and maybe you're not the person to be checking it at that point, and maybe he is, or, you know, all kinds of.
Right.
So I think if you just said may be monitored, all that is, that's just fair warning that they do not have a privacy expectation in emails, because that's what you're doing.
Sure. That's fine. It's one of the, I wanted it talked about, so. Uh, five nineteen, speaking to the media, um, just says, uh, you're designated spokesperson. So we don't really, I mean, I can create a schedule of who I think should talk or not talk, or, uh, you want to just be depending on the circumstances, if it's, obviously if it's a public emergency, it should probably either be Jim or myself. Um, but if it's public work, say we got a water leak, do you want it to be, do you want it to be Mark, you know?
You know, I've got lots of questions from the media. They come up here to the desk right after talking.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, and it, it's just like, you know, if we have some, if we have a tornado disaster or something, who do you want to be the, the town spokesperson? Do you want it to be the council president? Do you want it to be me? Do you want it to be Jim?
Does that mean some certain, certain circumstances, like Larry's saying, that may not be appropriate, but obviously for emergency, emergency services may be very appropriate, so.
In a given respect.
Yeah, I can create some sort of tree in there. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is pretty bad, and I don't think it's possible to what he's doing.
Yeah.
And I mean, e- even at that, everybody's provided business as well, it's probably the memory they want, you know? So it's probably a safer thing.
Yeah, that's right.
Is that how that works? I mean, from a liability perspective, I mean, is there any liability if you have a standard policy and somebody goes outside of this, does that involve the town from any liability?
Nothing in the policy book, uh, creates any kind of contractual relationship other than the applicable relationship to pass. The idea of a provision like this, which you keep, uh, let's say one of Chad's employees saying, you know, I wanna sound off about what I think, uh, how the parks are working, and I wanna respond and let people know we're gonna have a market, uh, at this part next year, when they don't know what the heck they're talking about. So you run it to the people who know kind of what they're talking about and, and that, I mean, that's the purpose of it. You don't have any liability with the issue.
Yeah, that's just because of, um.
Okay.
And then we just, we're identifying. You like your thing to.
This, no, it's not useless. It is a warning to people who are employees to read the policy book. And it's helpful, I think, to supervisors to know you can't be sounding off like that because you are not a designated spokesperson for park policy.
But in order to do that, I mean, you treat it. A matrix or just, no.
I don't think you do because, um, until that person is told they're a designated spokesperson, you tell that employee, uh, you weren't designated to do that.
So basically, we're just creating round determination because, you know, I mean, some of this stuff gets for dealing lawsuits and, I mean, all sorts of different things in the public. Keeping employees from doing what employees do.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you, maybe we're creating round determination as they continue.
Yes, yeah, I, I think that's right. I don't think you ever want a situation where the first time employee talks to one of our respective members of the media, you say, hey, you're out of here. But on the other hand. Oh, I fully disagree with that. Uh, yeah, uh, you know, if you have somebody who's continually talking out, basically outside of school in the sense that it's beyond their pay grade and beyond their responsibility, then that's a round determination. Yeah, it's a good warning to them, if you're gonna do this, here you go.
So leave it alone. So we're leaving it alone then, that basically.
Yeah, yeah. This is a very common thing and you, you might designate different spokespeople at different times.
Okay, fair enough.
With the same problems, having on who's involved in the problem.
Okay. Um, five twenty-six, mobile device usage. Uh, currently the police department, to my knowledge, are the only ones that get to type in. Um, a lot of, but other than those of us that have a town issued phone, everybody uses their, their cellphone. And I don't know if it's right or fair to only compensate the police officers when public works and parks employees use their personal phone as well, so.
Compensate people for using their phone.
The IRS might have, um, regulation on that.
Yeah. Do you know how they're, you know how you're.
Every three months they get forty-five dollars.
That's what I'm sorry?
Forty-five.
A month?
Every three months.
IRS has never had care about somebody with that.
But they still might have a.
Yeah, they may have a match.
Yeah.
But I guess it's somebody hired for two months.
My question is, is anybody that wants to be in communication and not have a cellphone, why would we pay for it if we're gonna have it anyways?
One of the sticky, sticky points of using your cellphone for government business is if there's a lawsuit or something, they can seize your personal phone if you're using it for company business. AKA, that's why I carry two, so.
And the thing you can have is, read that, you know, we saw it.
I mean, in theory, in theory, yeah. If you want carry two, it's, no, it's not fun carrying two.
How does that work? I mean, so is it a device or is it a number?
The device. They will take the device and hold it for years.
No, but who owns, but what's your own personal?
So if you use it, if they can show that you use it for town business, they can seize it and they will seize it.
You know, so. We've talked about a day there. We've talked about a day.
Whoever the, whoever the authority is that's investigating.
Well, you know, they, if, if you get involved in, uh, a, uh, a, you know, a lawsuit related to that, yeah, you could have potentially your documents, uh, downloaded. And they're really not to seize it for you here, but they're gonna go through applying messages that anybody can publish this.
Right.
And of course, that's the issue. You, you're kinda stuck with that one way or the other.
Yeah.
But a lot of people are concerned, well, I'm paid in public business, but I'm also texting my wife on that phone and I'm also texting my girlfriend on that phone. And, you know, whatever, and that's what gets embarrassing for that person.
But in that regard, the phone conversation or email, they can get off the server, doesn't that still have to get off the server?
Yeah, it's ju, it's just a thing that, that circulates around the, the government people is they can potentially use their personal cellphone for a time.
So where, where am I going with that?
So my, yeah, my question was just, do you want to also compensate other town employees beyond the police for the same thing essentially?
I don't know. I mean, when I got landlines, I didn't get compensated for.
Yeah.
I mean, when I have a landline, I'm gonna get compensated for people calling me on my landline or whatever. So I haven't told anyone, I was gonna take it all.
Did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, the thing in when we first got that was so people, you know, you have the different packages per se, it helps them move up to that current package. And then that's what that forty-five was to cover, uh, monthly, rising up.
Yeah, and, and there was also conversations at the time where, you know, there was a lot of police scanners and things like that, but when you call, you guys could talk on your cell phone, and nobody could pick up what you're talking about. It was a lot more secure than scanners and, you know, scanners and other radios. Correct. In that time, first responders get prior, priority, right?
At the end of the day, if the personal phone is under a plan with that company, there's only one, well, it might be two, but there's a couple of companies that offer that. Now, the town, we're on, go with the, the AT&T first net, but, and, I mean, it's, they use it as much as their radio. Dispatch has them calling in all the time, um, you know, disinformation they need further. I mean, they use them to call, uh, you know, complaints and stats, other officers to get information. I mean, it's, it's a regular piece of commu- it's a regular communication device.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, that's true. You didn't get unlimited, I guess unlimited talk time now.
They go to training, they take their computer, they can upgrade the hotspots, which I think they have, and they can use their phone for, for internet for their computers, of that course.
Right.
There's many different things, um, we're reaching out to, I'm reaching out to employees daily. My, my supervisors are reaching out to their employees multiple times a day, and it's on their personal phone. So it's almost a requirement of employment to have one.
Do we not have radios?
No, no, that, that went away many years ago now. Many years ago.
Milwaukee talking.
Milwaukee talking.
So there's a many foot staff on here. Were you thinking just the public works?
No, I mean, parks, I guess, if, you know, Virginia employees as well, if, if, so.
I've worked for companies where every employee was provided a phone, you know, by the company. Just came from one, another one. Um, this would be a lot cheaper. And I think it's important. I mean, it, it's, it's the only way we can out, you know, reach out to these employees while they're, while they're on the job or at home, or, or they're expected to answer that phone.
I, we're gonna do something like that. I think it should be supplemental, somebody's laying out one phone and not paying for their, only gonna have one phone, and then they're paying for a phone and they're using that one. It's irresponsible to do that either, so I think it would be hard. So meaning that your town's own cell phone that would be issued to the workers and they use for internal communication. Do you wanna do that? Do our workers want to carry two?
They do not.
I, I do not. Then I think if only you have one, we're gonna do anything that should be, we should now, because we should have to cover their personal side in addition. I have a phone, I have unlimited minutes, I've got unlimited data, I've got unlimited text, forty-five bucks.
I think everybody's cell phone.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't hope anybody that doesn't have unlimited.
So, yeah.
And maybe that was, that forty-five dollars was done a long time ago, and that's what you said, we had to pay for minutes, so.
I mean, last thing I want my guys to do is not want to use their phone to work, because they gotta call me at night if there's a squeeze or if there's a major incident. They call me on their phone.
But it says that the police department is seeing this now, so that's not the question, correct?
Yeah, no, you're correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they currently, they currently do get it. My question was, do you want to?
It's pretty hard back there for somebody that already has it.
Do you want to ask was my question?
Well, I thought we were speaking to the wife.
I just hope that you're already talking about it. I'm very confident at that level, we have a.
Every three months, is that what it is?
Every month.
Fifteen bucks a month? And then, um, sorry, I don't wanna drag this out anymore, but there was a couple of questions that were asked after the fact of this being printed, but, um, one suggestion was, can we, do we want to create a sick day bank for, that employees can share their sick days if they're not gonna use them, if somebody needs to take some extended time off?
You know, we've had times in the past where most of the town is on vacation, or has a sick day or a holiday, and we don't have anybody working, or we need people working. Especially like when it's Thanksgiving and Fourth of July, we've had times where we're gonna have town employees working. We had a fire chief one time that had, I don't know, like a year bank, usually got paid for the last year, and they're gonna hire a fire chief because the whole budget wasn't, the guy who retired.
Yeah.
So, I mean, banks in that time, I mean.
Well, no, my, my, my question is, yeah, do we want to create a charitable bank where I can give my sick days to someone else who needs them? If they're, you know, if they have some sort of medical emergency or family emergency. So that's, that's the ask.
Well, I think we each have to give two days incident sick day, and then there was a committee that would be, and decide how many days they would give that person.
Yeah.
So it wasn't a choice. You had to give two days.
Let me get off some.
I don't know. And then another, another thirty days during the season.
I think it's a nice option. People get in that bad a situation that, you know, when they do that for a couple of years.
So this is, this is, I give up seven, almost every year I give up seven sick days. I'm eighteen, I'm a very seldom takes sick days. Virginia had an employee who had a medical issue, who used a whole lot of his time, he came back half day. If we could supplement her or his half day with one of my half days that I return to the town every year, I'd be more than willing to do that. Um, and I know I have another employee who also has been here long enough. They have sixty days, who very seldom takes sick days, um, kind of like this year. Um, but still, we're returning days at the end of the year.
Well, why don't you guys come up with a proposal, because, I mean, maybe you don't want to do your thing.
We don't, I think it's an optional thing.
What Cindy said is more important than anything.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think it's an optional thing that you wanna do. I mean, for me, I'd be more than willing to do that. I'm not using.
What are we doing if they're on the, you know, here?
Yeah, basically.
No, I think that there probably needs to be some level of parameters, otherwise. Are these all personal days? Then we really find out.
Sick, sick days. Just sick days we're talking about.
I think we had a conversation with, I mean, just say, X number of personal days around here, six, not six, six days, whatever.
Yeah, we have, we have both. We have personal days and sick, and vacation days.
It wouldn't take to be very many times you'd use that day. I mean, you're gonna have to get approval from another employee to give up his or her days if you're gonna need the day.
Right, and that's what, kind of what they're suggesting is.
It's not getting, it's not costing us anymore.
Yeah.
I think it's, I, I think I know the employee you're talking about. I think it's a generous offer, and I, I would agree.
Yeah, I think there's, I, I mean, I personally feel like if you guys want to put a proposal together that has parameters around it, similar to what the fire church where you give some of their stuff for people that are retiring, um, just so that we've got some parameters around it. I think it's an important thing to do, especially for coworkers, or if you want this culture, to know that people are taking care of people.
Right.
I like that idea.
How many sick days do we give a year?
Seven.
Seven?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'll, we'll work on that. And then there was another question about, um, lon- the longevity that every employee gets stops, it just stops growing at twenty years. Um, then we've got employees that have been here thirty plus years, and they're making the same longevity pay they did fifteen years prior.
That's true, because we get a higher salary.
Correct, correct. But they're, they, they, however the formula works, it stops at twenty years, and, is twenty years and beyond is the same formula. So there was just an ask, there was just an ask, if there was any.
Well, there's a lot of these values that are doing longevity, so what is standards? How much is that every week, every month?
Well, not there yet, but, yeah, you know, longevity is a ten.
Well, you get two dollars for ten cents an hour per hour of employees.
And?
So two dollars an hour for four-five employees.
And then it's a little different per salary employee.
So eighty, eighty dollars a week? So then how is it for eighty dollars a week?
I don't think, I don't think our way of employees contribute stop at that point. I think it's just, uh, the longevity for.
I'm looking.
So that, forty-two hundred dollars more a year, just on longevity, and just to do all the pay. And, and more an hour for a year?
Yeah, so they started at like seven forty-five after one year, and they didn't, and they got a zero rate and they set.
Well, after twenty years.
It'd be not a nine fifty-five if they never got any other rate.
How much per hour is that?
Two dollars.
So it's percentage for salary, but.
I was just, I don't know what the percentage is, not the way over my head.
It's a formula, it's a formula.
Formula, police department salary or something.
I don't want to watch, can you say more of this until we see other numbers?
Oh, it's one percent per year. Does that sound right?
That's salary.
Salary, yeah. If there's one year, you get twenty percent of the salary, so you're coming off now on your part.
I'll check, I'll check with other community.
Then I would think we can't, at this time, make a motion on.
Yeah, we're gonna, all these have to be, there you go. Yeah, you want to talk about the job, or the certifications or job application?
Yeah, um, but when I got my certification, I came to the cell phone app, you know, for a dollar rate, and just like, um, people who would earn CBL, what would you guys want to put as like a merit rate for that?
I don't have any interest.
Right. A lot of them come and get it after they're here.
Yeah. Um, I've always saw two dollars an hour for a CBL and a dollar for a substandard license. You get the license required by the facility, it's two. We have no specification currently, so nothing to talk to, because it gives us a lot of interest. What that looks like by the first time. Our worry is when they get a CBL, they move on.
That was my last thing.
Any help? What, what's in the CBL bonus? Are you, in the industry, that's what they get, the CBL move on, and watch this, uh?
Um, CBLs are in high demand. They're in high demand, which is why we're having so much problem with the CBL. Truck drivers and, you know, we need them for the dump trucks, but they're not hard to get, it's hard to keep if they're a man driver. So you gotta make it, make it worth a little bit.
No, it's, uh, how long is the training? Two weeks?
Oh, geez, eight, eight weeks?
Yeah.
Ten weeks.
It's eight or ten weeks to get a CBL.
Yeah, that, that's pretty involved now, but the, uh, federal government, um, changed the regulations on CBL training and, and made it pretty stringent. You know, we had this big shortage of, of truck drivers, so they made it harder to get the license. And more expensive, like the price doubled also. And.
And there.
Couple of years ago, Virginia and I did increase the training budget across the board. We only had a training budget for the water department, I think. Now we have a, we, we gave a, um.
No, it was the street department. It was the street department.
It was the street department. So now we have a, and we increased it to five thousand dollars and, for each department, to send these people off to training and realistic training, not.
Did they reuse the water lessons?
I do not. They've had my application for a year and a half. Nor will they answer any. Or Jim, but I have two ways to work.
Yeah, we can try to come up with this, some sort of schedule where you look at her possible certification and what it might be worth.
Well, just one more thing on that. You know, when we did train, we'd pay money for different things, and then they have to pay for certain things.
No, we did have that, but the state law just changed on that. Um, I mean, we can still do our thing, but they also have some specific rules that you have as far as three years and hundreds.
They have to reimburse them?
No.
It's, so if someone finds we hired them and say, there's another small town, and they had two and a half years on them, we would have to reimburse that town for that officer's training. During training.
Oh, I've not, I.
Yeah, that's a new, that's a new one.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding.
Until three years.
Yeah, if, if you poach another officer from their department that's fully trained, you have to reimburse them for their training.
They'd have, yeah, if they just quit and move on to a different type of profession or something, then that wouldn't.
Isn't it, don't they have to reimburse it?
Yeah, for, uh.
Yeah, but it's not.
Well, I just, I was wondering if, maybe we should do the same for CBL training, expect them to stay for a while and help this March problem over in Michigan, Cleveland. Great.
Well.
The other old business, Larry? Same business, right?
No, I think I was wrong.